...meeting of the Detroit Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance to the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by city council. The other individuals seated at the table this evening are representative of the city's planning department, the city attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carla Warbin Associates. If you wish to address the planning commission, please come forward and recognize and provide your name and address on a sign-on sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the planning commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I ask that all cell phones, PDAs, or other devices that might disrupt this meeting, please either be placed in silent mode or be turned off. You'll roll call Ms. Arnicki.
Mr. Admanian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
Ms. Howe?
Coram present. Item number two on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please? Ms. Cooper and a second, Mr. Faison. Roll call Ms. Arnicki, please.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Krant?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Sanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Edmanian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Item number four on the agenda, public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment to an item that is not on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to item number five on the agenda. Preliminary site phone review, file number SPJPLN2017-0029, proposed to the shops at 888 Royal Oak's corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, 888 West Big Beaver, section 21, currently zoned, BB, Big Beaver District.
Thank you and good evening. Thank you, good evening. The first application tonight is a proposed one-story multi-tenant building at the southeast corner of the 888 Big Beaver site. The planning commission should be very familiar with the site, as this is the last remaining building that the planning commission will review from this project. As you can, as you note on the screen above us, this is the concept layout of the entire site. Just to orient ourselves with how this is going to be laid out, this is existing tower. The apartment building that was approved is located in this location. This is the seven-story parking deck with the frontage of retail buildings. This is the approved Fidelity Building. This is the approved Shake Shack. These two buildings have been constructed. And the planning commission is going to review the Yard House and the Seasons 52, which you've already reviewed at one point. The proposed multi-tenant building is located in this corner. In the concept plan, the planning commission had approved these as two separate buildings. After further deliberation by the applicant, they are coming in with one building. The planning commission, in concept, approved two 8,500-square-foot buildings. What's being proposed by the applicant is an 18,000-square-foot building. So, a little bit more square footage, but the footprints themselves are basically the exact same space as they were, and it was just two buildings. The building is set back 17 feet from Big Beaver right away. This is also consistent where the Fidelity, as well as the Shake Shack building is, and that provides some continuity of the street wall along the frontage of Big Beaver. We do note that there is limited at-grade parking, which will be located behind the building itself, in this location. But behind it, the majority of the parking is going to be in the parking structure that's being built, constructed right now. Parking is sufficient based even with the additional square footage that the applicant is proposing. We note the building will be primarily masonry and glass with some metal accents. And the applicant is here tonight to answer any questions the planning commission has in regards to either the tenants, the design structure, and any of the architectural concepts. We are recommending approval of the plan as submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Sodan.
And the architect is here, and he's providing me with a PowerPoint, and he's prepared to make a presentation for the project.
Any questions for Mr. Carla? No questions, and the applicant is here. Go ahead and present.
Should I stand here or up there?
That's right there, it's my microphone.
Evening. My name is Jason Creaker, speaking for the architects. The address is 1412 East Eleven Mile in Royal Oak. And as mentioned, we're here for, I guess it's the last piece of the puzzle here on this development. And initially, there'd be two buildings. And then the owner just said, you know what, it's going to be, make a lot more sense if we just do one, I can build it, finish the site, lease it up, and I think it just made sense for him in that regard. So that's why I turned in the one building. Conversation's simple as that. So we have this building that's about 18,000 square feet. Right now, there are about five tenants planned. I say about because we have a couple tenants that are committed, I'll say, they're not 100% signed up, but we have received work orders from the tenants to start planning on and then moving in. One is Pure Sleep here in the middle. The other one is City Barbecue, which is the anchor on the east. At one time, it jagged forked those plans, which is a breakfast-type establishment. I think that they may have backed out, but our renderings aren't really already done, so we left that in. So the plan was to have a restaurant tenant, a restaurant tenant, and then some mercantile and services in the center. I can just start walking you through this, and we'll just talk as we go here. I also did bring a material board that I'll discuss. I don't know if that was mentioned. I can write up. This right here is just a quick breakdown of some of the square footages of the spaces in the building. So anywhere from 3,500 square feet to 4,000. Pure Sleep's just under 4,000 square feet. Location that we're all aware of, as Ben already mentioned, this right here is the location on the site, it's on the southeast corner. Existing conditions. So this right here is our architectural site plan. You can see that the footprint of the building comes around, and it bumps in on the north end. And the reason why is it gives us a really nice pedestrian plaza here with some public art that we're planning on. And we do have some variations and bump-ins and outs around the facade, all the way around. One thing that the owner was very, very concerned about, or wanted to make sure of, is that we had a lot of variations on the facade, that it wasn't just a flat facade. Some of the walls, because of our projections, are upwards of over a foot thick, because we have pilasters and things that give it architectural interest. It makes the building feel kind of beefy, which I think is really nice. And we want to make sure that we held the, let's see here. Want to make sure that we held the street frontage along Big Beaver, so that you have that continuity of the building wall. And then we also have, and this is actually a really nice feature that happened, it was really a product of, whenever you do a development like this in urban, or the suburban, but in an urban context where you have a lot of buildings on a site, you run into the, sometimes the issues of the grays, right? The grays around the buildings have to flow and drain the water, connect with other streets and sidewalks. So what happens here is as you go from the west to the east, the site falls by about four feet. So we had to decide, do we do steps in the building? Or do we actually keep this all at one level, so you can have a pedestrian plaza here as well? And then the sidewalk falls by about four feet as you go up to the corner. So I actually think it turned out really, really nice. So I want to show you that, because I think it becomes a very nice urban space out here, allows people to put chairs and tables and sit up there and use that. This right here is a floor plan that shows where City Barbecue is going to go, Pure Sleep, and these are now labeled as available. Here's our exterior elevations. You can see that we have wall glass on the north and on the south. The elevations are pretty much mirrored, north and south. And then we have, you know, variations in the heights. It's a tall building. The taller elements are over 30 feet, so it's going to feel like a two-story building. And that was by design, to make sure that it's not diminished by the two-story Fidelity Building or the other buildings surrounding it. And then this building, this piece of the building here, where City Barbecue is going, has some touches of their branding, but also it can turn into another restaurant or use down the road if they work separately in the future. The other elevations, as mentioned, we have masonry, metal panels. We have a little bit of wood trim, we'll call it, or faux wood trim in these pieces here. Let me show you right here. This is really the material palette. So we have the lighter beige brick, and the renderings will show a little bit. We have the darker reddish-type brick here. We have clear glass, which is perfect for retail. We have cast stone, which is a really nice high-end material. And we have the metal panels, and then this right here is a representation, I just couldn't get the sample in time. But basically, it's a wood azac, I'm sure people know what that is. And it looks really nice. And, you know, I didn't want to use real wood, because I've never seen it age well in Michigan. I have seen this used on buildings around Ferndale, Royal Oak, and two, three years later, it's supposed to be ready. So that was, that's the idea behind that. Just for reference, if we talk about it, we did have the, one item that came up in the report, which asked us to look at the glazing calculations. So the glazing required is just under 2,000 feet, and what's provided is just over 2,000 feet. And this is just showing how we came up with the numbers. You do get bonuses for different materials for projections out or in if they're over a certain number of inches. So we followed the Form-based code, and we comply, to our numbers, we comply with the So now I have about six or eight slides that just show renderings of the building. So this just shows in the context of the site. This right here is that walkway that goes from Big Beaver over to the parking deck. And then you can see here, this is actually raised about four and a half feet above the corner, we'll have some branding here. And then you can see that it's a great space out here for outdoor seating. There's another elevation on the south, shows that. So we have some steps that are coming up off the sidewalk, and we have a little ramp right here for handicap access. We turned the southeast corner on an angle to one, negotiate the corner here, so you get some branding, and also it gives this tenant some great visibility as you're heading due west on Big Beaver. So it's a little hard to see, because it's bright in here, but I blew up some images, so you could see that there's a lot of ins and outs, projections, there's a lot of detail on this building. So you can see that this brick actually steps back in, we have, these wood panels are actually more like shadow boxes, so there's a lot of variation, it's not a flat building by any means. We have brick pilasters. These are metal panels that tie into these metal panels. This retaining wall would be a stone that would match and tie into the Fidelity Building, so we're bringing some continuity around the site. Right here where it says jagged fork, this is a little bit more of a modern expression. So you have the cast stone, it's smooth, with some pilasters that project, with some nice high-end lights that go all the way around the building. Metal, there, these would be epoxy-coated metal canopies here and up here. So the epoxy coating's a little bit more money, but it'll last for a very, very long time. It's the stuff that they use to coat roller coasters and stuff like that. So it's way better, because lots of them do paint them out a little rust, and it looks bad from up here, so we don't like to do that. We have metal panels up there. And then we have the different variations of brick colors. This is just you on Big Beaver looking at where Pure Sleep would go, so we have the stairs coming up, we've flanked it with some nice planters, so it looks very sophisticated.
What is that roof feature? What do you call that?
Steel pergola, up there. That guy?
Is it performable function, doesn't it?
No, it's aesthetics.
Aesthetic?
Yeah, it is. It gives us a detail here, gives us some nice visual appeal. And this here is a view inside of the site, looking, I guess that would be southwest. And this right here just shows how this starts to complete that streetscape inside, the parking deck's right here. And then these stores get broken up, and then people can put dining tables and things like that outside. So we created a little plaza here for pedestrians. And this here's just more of a close-up of faux wood slats and the detail. What's hard to see in the rendering is that what we're doing with the cast stone is we have little bands of six-inch that run through, so it adds another layer of detail to the facade. That's it.
Pretty nice.
So we're, I'm available for questions, obviously.
Thank you. Any questions? And Mr. Krant?
Quick question. The Pure Sleep shop, is that, is there one already on Big Beaver? At least if...
I think there may be. I'm going off memory, I think I remember seeing one further down.
Just interesting, they're all like two miles apart, three miles apart?
Yeah, that is a good point. Yeah, I don't know the ins and outs of that.
I just wondered if they're moving, or from that location, this?
Maybe.
Don't know.
Yeah, I don't know. I got a work letter from them, it said, "Design."
Guys. Nice to know. Thank you.
I believe the Pure Sleep that's existing now is just in front of the sports, Detroit Sports Arena, in that parking lot next to Smash Burger.
Correct.
Right there, so...
I think it's a smaller store, to me, it looks like it is.
And again, so we got a ton of work letters. I don't know if that means that they actually signed on the dotted line. What they told us is, start designing the building to accommodate so many tons of heating cooling, things like that, so that's what we're, and then branding. So, for example, the signage, that's not really, that's there for context. We're not doing the signage. I just want to make sure that it'll look good for, when they show this to the prospective tenant.
Yes, Mr. Tagle.
Going on your plaza here, turning the corner and heading north, what is the grade elevation when you get back to the walkway on the north side of the building?
It goes back, so let me see if we have a good, actually, you know what, the elevation's probably the best way to show you. So this is all at the building elevation, and then right here, just to the east of the door, it then drops down by, I think about a foot and a half. I have the grading line, I can look at it if you want. And then as you turn the corner and come around to the street, it keeps grading down.
But from the back parking lot, are you negotiating steps back there, or is it like one step?
No.
It looks like a ramp.
Yeah, it slopes down. According to our civil engineers, it beats ADA. And we're not, there's no steps. There are no steps at all, there's just slopes.
No handrails required for that?
Not here, no. But in the front, we do have this ramp right here. And actually, you know what, there should be a handrail. There should be a handrail. Make sure that's on. But there, that would...
I have a question. I think you mentioned it, but the parking deck is going to serve these locations?
Yes.
Is that the concept?
Correct.
And then, what about as you go further, I guess, west? Would the parking deck, would your expectation, would people park in the parking deck and walk to those other restaurants, or would they park in the surface lot?
Let's see here. Parking deck, for the most part, I mean, technically, it's serving, it's helping to serve the whole site.
Sure. No, understood, understood. Just as a practical matter.
As a practical matter, I would think that, well, Fidelity has some of these dedicated, has, I think, three, two or three spaces dedicated. I would think the parking deck, like in this, would serve all of these. There is parking here.
There is, though.
There's also parking here. And then there's also parking out here, if you can find it, because Shake Shack takes them all up, because they're so popular.
Right. Yeah. You've seen that, yeah. Thank you.
Quick question.
Yes, Mr. Krant?
Those, it looks like underneath are attached to the eight-story parking deck. Those are retail stores going to be along the...
That's correct, yes.
Yet to be announced.
Correct. Yeah, you know what, I think that they did mention that they're getting some, we didn't do that project, so I don't know. I'll just be surprised.
Do you know why that pedestrian crossing from the deck to right there, is that a raised crossing, more of a calming, or is that a level flush at grade, at grade with the...
It's level at grade, but it will, I think we do have, if I remember right, a different treatment through there to help identify that it's a pedestrian crossing. And if, we did bump out the curbs as well. See if we can show it here. So we have a different pavement treatment there, and then as you go through, it's hard to see, because it's covered there, but the curbs bump out, so it squeezes in.
Is that, would that be correct, as in that the parking on the north would be mostly ADA, and most customers would actually park into the structure?
I believe we do have some, a few ADA spaces here. We have more ADA spaces over front of the west as well. Again, I'd have to look back at the site and the civil engineers to see its decoration.
Mr. Edmonds?
You mentioned the jagged fork has just recently dropped out. Do you know the reason for that?
No. No, I'm sorry, I don't.
I'm always looking for breakfast places.
Mr. Sodan?
Just, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, but the challenge here is you've got to meet the transparency requirements on the Big Beaver side, and help to make, help to add to this experience for people on the Big Beaver side, but you also want to create essentially an interior street. So you got, it's really a, it's a four-sided building, but it's really got two sides that really need a high attention to detail. And I really like the fact that you, I mean, part of me wishes that that plaza area was on the Big Beaver side, but you've done a lot to really improve the Big Beaver side. But the plaza area interior is really cool, and it really makes out a nice space in there.
Yeah, I think so. There are a few other projects nearby that have a lot of glass on Big Beaver, and they treat it actually pretty neat, you know, they have like graphic, they do some stuff on the windows to, because you have to have a back house somewhere. So, but, you know, but there's still an entrance, you still get through, you still eat, you know, part of that, and you can walk through. They kind of took the back house in the middle, so. This is deep, you know, some of these are, I think at the shallowest, I think we're 70 feet, some of these are a little bit deeper, so we're giving them a little bit of room to do that inside.
Mr. Sanzika?
Has the tenant space along the parking deck, on the south side of the parking deck, has that been identified yet?
No.
The same thing, have we seen any detail? If it's under construction, now is that...
The tenants that lie, that, under the parking deck, that are for the grade?
Right.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't know what those tenants are, that I'm aware of.
Have you seen any elevation during that?
Yeah, when the planning commission approved the parking deck and the apartments approved at one, while you're meeting, those elevations were approved as part of that approval. Yeah.
I don't recall that.
It's, the parking deck's actually pretty easy, but the storefront down at the gray level is pretty simple. It's really just glass, you know, and it's not to just, you know, brand it, assign it to the bottom.
Mr. Tagle?
Where are your dumpsters located for the restaurants?
Shake Shack has a dumpster located there. These restaurants here would have their dumpsters located inside the parking deck, there's, I think, one or two compactors in there. So they would bring their trash across to them.
Any concerns with, over time, leaving a trail of dirt grease, whatever, like...
Yeah, there could be. And I remember a while back, when we discussed the master plan, I think we basically talked about that. I think a lot of it goes back to managing, the tenants managing their staff and taking care of it. I know that, you know, Chuck made a point, you know, his developments in Florida, and I get that they don't snow down there, but almost all of them have parking decks that are a lot like this. I actually went down there and saw some of these, and it's just a different mindset. And it's the same setup, even so that they all go in there and they use the trash and dumpsters, a little load right here, you know, in the morning and stuff like that. So it's kind of that, you know, the way that they work. I think that it's something that a restaurateur would have to just make sure they have proper standard operating procedures to do that. There's a potential that, I guess, something could come out of the car.
Well, it's a handsome streetscape there, you've done special paving and everything, I mean, it's going to be a color, it's not blacktop. You know, blacktop will hide a lot of sins, you know. So, you know, I guess you're right, I mean, it's certainly going to be up to whoever is managing, and we're seeing that, but...
No, I think it's a concern, like I said, but I know we talked about beat it up, and I think it comes back down to the management there, employees.
Mr. Edmonds?
How about deliveries? Where, will they be being on the north side there?
Yeah, for the most part, deliveries will be in this area here, absolutely. They cannot deliver here, but they'll find spots.
And hours of delivery?
From what I recall, correctly, I think Chuck was saying that it would be in the mornings, which is pretty common, you know. And, you know, I'm obviously in Royal Oak, and I see deliveries all the time throughout the day, and then mostly in the mornings, and they'll just pull up in the street, do their stuff. I think this would be pretty similar, where they could do that. You know, the office users are not going to park, you know, they'll park at the parking deck, for sure, you know. So otherwise, in the morning, this is pretty quiet, I would think, unless there's a restaurant, a breakfast place. It'd be different.
Ms. Cruz?
When we originally approved this plan, it seems that, you said that the retail space that we're looking at tonight was two buildings?
Correct.
And not one, right? And so we've combined it to be this 18,000-square-foot, one unit. I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but it seems, at some level to me, it's become a strip plaza. Like, when it was two buildings, it sort of kept the urban context in a suburban setting, and each of the buildings stood independently, like you would expect to see sort of in a downtown area. And now that we've created one building, while he's done a fabulous job with the design, may not have any issue with the design, I'm just saying it's kind of become a strip plaza, like what we have on other areas of Big Beaver, and that portion of Big Beaver that we sort of think of as our Miracle Mile, if you will. I mean, it's sort of a really high-rent district of Big Beaver. And when it was two buildings, I liked that we had that space where we had walkability, we had another point of access to that nice pedestrian and eating area that is behind the buildings, and we've lost that now. So I'm not sure that I love the idea of an 18,000-square-foot building instead of the two separate buildings, for all the reasons, you know, that I've just described, but most importantly, what you've said yourself, trying to create this urban context. Well, when you put a strip plaza in a development, it's no longer really all that urban, right? Urban buildings stand alone.
They touch.
They touch, but I'm just, I kind of liked it better when it was the two. Maybe I stand alone in that, but it's...
I'd like to follow up on that.
Sure.
Not to argue the point, but if you look at downtown Royal Oak or downtown Birmingham, that's just one big building. I mean, they're different sizes and shapes, just like that, but it's one long, non, it continues, no breaks. It's urban. It is urban. Sorry.
It just seems strip-plazish to me. It just, I mean, it's sort of like that Qdoba Plaza that's a little further down, and like we talked about, the other Pure Sleep with the Smash Burger, and I just think you're taking one of those and flopping it in what I think is otherwise a really sort of fabulous area on that corner.
The others are connected like that, too. But I don't think it degrades or brings down this proposed retail space.
No, I mean, absolutely, I agree. And I get that, because it was broken up, right, so you can see through it all that. I think, you know, we wanted to make sure that we didn't have just a strip mall.
Right.
And I think, again, I think we were brusque in the fact that the grays changed, and gives us some amazing stuff that is not like the other centers. Like this whole elevated area here, and we can have some nice planters, and we can really accentuate the corner. So I think there's, I think there are a lot of things we were able to do to break that up, especially with this improved, but something, you know, like this courtyard we created with the public art, and I get that's not a cut-through, but it gives us a great space for people to have, for little diners, someone to go in there and do a little outdoor seating and everything else. I think we're combating that by giving a lot of relief and giving other interests around the building. But I absolutely agree.
If I'm the only one, you know, bothered by it, then clearly I'm the minority, so...
I think, Ms. Cruz, what you're bringing up is the fact that that space would have
allowed for the public art that we were expecting.
And that walkability between the buildings.
Where it's not a frontage of 200 or 300 feet of walkability, but you would have had that, that would have allowed that pedestrian traffic to mingle and to interact with the front and the back as well, and now.
It was another access space, and, and now we've, we've lost that. You only have it between the Shake Shack and the Fidelity Building.
And now this footprint actually restricts that walkability only to the end of the building. You don't have that interaction anymore. And so there are, there are definite differences between the two buildings in this footprint. But I think, as you mentioned, there are very unique aspects to this design that are, quite frankly, I, I think unique to, to this site for Troy. I don't think we have any other Troy, any other site that has that corner location where you have a gray drop of four feet that allows that, that unique corner centerpiece for that tenant and the front. So I think that, that kind of, in some, in some way, I think it compensated for, for actually eliminating that center space there, the unique features of the site in terms of the gray.
I also think that eliminating it, making it one building, makes it kind of cozy for the people in the apartments if there are places that they come down and they shop at, and they go back up. It's more, I mean, it's, it's, you could take it either way.
Was, was the reason for that a marketing? The fact that they were combining these and because they thought they could market smaller spaces?
Maybe. Honestly, you know, the conversation with the owner, he said, you know what, I want to, you know, let's just do one, and it was literally that quick. And I think whatever he does in mind, I'm not the teller.
Well, if he were here, we would question him about that.
Are you aware of the tenant that is being proposed as City Barbecue? Is this their first location in Michigan? Do you know anything about?
I don't know. I did, I did a little bit of research on them, and I don't think they have another location in Michigan, you know, down to the south, if I could see. And I don't know their locations, but it is a franchise, I know that.
Ben mentioned in his report, Seasons 52 in Yard House. We had some dialogue with the applicant today, and we think that he's likely going to come back before us in later this month or two weeks. We're waiting revised plans. So my point is, is the owner, who's not with us today, is delivering on this development. I mean, there's a lot that's already gone on and a lot that's going on now, and it's, it's really coming along. It's exciting. I see, I see this, these renderings, and selfishly, I have a place to lock for lunch now. I mean, I do now, but I've got even more options when this is done, so it's pretty exciting.
You can't draw fast enough. Seriously, how fast can you go?
Mr. Evans.
What is your timeline for completion of this?
Let's say, let's say that we get through tonight, hopefully we do. We would be ready for, for the Smith Building Permits in probably, you know, three weeks or something like that, and then a couple of weeks. I mean, they want to break around as soon as possible, so I'm hoping that we can, as soon as the spring, you know, starts to hit, shovels are in the ground. The contractor's waiting for us to basically get, get things in their hands.
Mr. Crandall. Yeah, I think if there are no more questions, comments for that, we can't, and I think we're ready for resolution. Mr. Crandall.
Resolution number PC-2018-1. Resolve that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 and zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed The Shops at 888, located on the northeast corner of Big Beaver and Crooks, 888 West Big Beaver Road, Section 21, within the Big Beaver VB District, be granted subject to the following. Subject to the following. Provide calculations to confirm, to confirm that transparency has been met. Number two, provide compliant light plan prior to final site plan approval.
Good motion for the resolution. Can I get a second for Mr. Faison? We'll call him, sorry to be late.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crandall?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Javi Hadian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to it coming to light. Item number six on the agenda tonight, preliminary site plan review. File number SPJPLN2017-0027. Proposed 5956 Livernoy, east of the site of Livernoy, south of Square Lake, 5956 Livernoy, Section 10, currently zoned NNQ, neighborhood NQ District.
Thank you. Thank you. The second application tonight is proposing a 1,600 square feet medical office building located on Livernoy. This one is located on the eastern portion of Livernoy, south of Square Lake. The site is currently vacant. The site, I'm sorry, the site is currently vacant with no tree cover or anything other than, than grass. You will note that access to the site will be via a shared access off Livernoy from the northern, northern property. There's an existing shared access easement to, to allow for access for this site. This shared access easement was put in place in 1984, 1985, when this development was developed. And the reason for that was to allow for future access for the southern parcel because it would be virtually impossible to put an access point off Livernoy. So the existing easement already is in place for access for this development. I will note that in order to put the access in this location, the northern parcel will lose approximately three parking spaces. I went back and reviewed the, a site plan when that was originally approved on, and it showed no parking in those three spaces. The applicant has been using those as three parking spaces, but they will lose those in the future. I also did a parking calculation for this northern parcel, and they still do meet the parking requirements even when losing three parking spaces in the future. From an ordinance perspective, they meet the parking. For practicality, it doesn't appear that the site is underparked, but they would lose three spaces in the, in the future. Like, I know the applicant is proposing to build a 1,600 square foot building. Mr. Sada, can you pull the site plan up? The building will be located approximately in the southwest corner of the site. The building is approximately 14 feet from the Livernoy right-of-way. The applicant is not able to install it 10 feet, or place it 10 feet from Livernoy right-of-way because there's, there's an existing sanitary line that's located in the front of the building, so they couldn't put it up on top of the line. So they had to move back four feet from what the ordinance requires. The applicant is providing a full sidewalk along the entire building, and the nine parking spaces that are required are all going to be located in the rear of the building. The applicant does meet all landscaping requirements as well as all setback and building height requirements. The applicant is proposing a full masonry building with a front of, a large front, you can see a large front glass, as well as glass windows along the side and the rear. We have asked the applicant to provide material samples at the meeting and also discuss their design motif, for lack of a better term, for this proposed building. The one particular item that we have noted of concern is, is in regards to trash storage and trash location. The applicant is not providing a dumpster on site. They do note that they will have trash to be located within the existing building, and it will be rolled out on trash day for trash pickup. This was an, a rather unusual approach. We haven't seen that for commercial buildings in the city, and so we asked if they could provide documentation from the trash pickup service that they will use, that they will be able to service the building using that technique. And so we've asked the applicant to provide that and discuss that in more details. So with that being said, we are recommending approval provided that the applicant can better describe their design, design theme, as well as write clarification on trash pickup for the site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carla. Any questions for that, Mr. Carla?
Can you tell me where the bicycle is going to be located?
Yeah, it's, it's on the site plan. It's basically going to be located somewhere in this location right in front of the building.
Over in front?
Yeah.
Mr. Tagle.
There seemed to be some type of an access off of Livernoy that would be to the east of the building that's north of this property. Is that? Right where the 55986 is, the number? Like, there's a, there's a drive coming in off of, I'm sorry, Square Lake, not Livernoy. Yeah. Does that go all the way through? Is there a cross easement there, or is that not a, I mean, could somebody exit from this property?
Yeah, yes, they could come through here, and there's, the easement dead ends basically in this little, right here. In all practicality, though, I know someone could come through here and go and...
Is that a paved area back there?
The easement itself is, is basically a rectangle. Looks like that.
So interestingly, we've got the easement on that property in 1984. It's taken, what, 30, 34 years to get reciprocity? But that's what planning is about, right?
Forsight.
Any other questions for Mr. Carla? If not, we have the applicant.
My name is Romeo, Department of Romeo. I'm going to have my architect come in, but he's at Orlando, Florida, for the builder show, so he was able to make it. So I'll try to answer all your questions. First of all, I want to address that situation with the trash. I did get a signed paper into the department here that says that the Tringoli, the trash people, they can, they can pick up the garbage in the back of the building, no problem. So they have, you know, they signed off on that. So I don't know if this is still a problem. Without stall effect, that was feasible here, we could do it that way. So I followed up and got the approvals from the trash company, and they said they can pick it up, so I hope that's not a issue. Okay, as far as the building itself, we want to design a building that was friendly, approachable, something that fit in with the neighborhood, similar to a lot of buildings in the area that have flat roofs. There's a lot of, it's a mixed area, there's a lot of wooden structures that have the cable roofs, but it's about 50/50, you know, flat roofs versus cable roof. This particular building is located in Livernoy, just saw this, saw this Square Lake Road. I'm familiar with this 43-unit condominium, that's directly across the street from that particular site. They're actually putting that 43-unit condominium up right now. It's also across the street from the original Troy Post Office, which is now a, pardon, a, you know, it's a sandwich shop or something, so. If it's in the neighborhood, because it's similar to a lot of the buildings in the neighborhood, the only difference, it's newer, it's, it's more open, it has more glass than most of the buildings in the area. We want, we wanted to make a building that, that could be used for many different businesses. Some of the businesses that could be used for, not a building, financial institutions, real estate. Anyway, I have one, one company, Edward Jones Investments, they're right next door. They expressed interest in renting this building after I showed them the plan because the present building is too small, so they, they really are interested in renting this one. Oh, yeah, one of the things I really like about this building is something you really can't see, and that's how it's going to be built, which may be a topic for another time, but this is going to be an all steel structure, you know, steel trusses, steel joists, steel roof. It's going to have dentistry, dentistry shield, outer sheeting rather than plywood. What I'm trying to say is it's going to be fireproof. I really want a building that's fireproof because I see so many accidents these days with people being burned up in buildings and everything. I just, I just want to make this safe, okay? So my intention is to make it completely fireproof so that nothing can possibly happen to anybody. I think we achieved that, I think we achieved the design parameters to just make it a nice-looking building, easy to access. We've got a lot of glass, so we can duck outdoors, flows through the indoors. It's kind of like, you know, it's, it's a friendly building, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Senzey.
I'm just curious, is this a, you mean, more than one tenant in the building?
This is just a one tenant unit. It's a 1,680 square feet, it's only, it's very small.
Can you give us an idea about the signage?
My name is...
About the signage on the building? How?
Oh, the signage.
There's very little detail on the plans of the building.
Well, the sign would be whatever, whoever occupies the building will place a, you know, sign in it where that white space is doing there, and, you know, dictating the type of business that it is. But no, I think put a sign there because nobody's designed it yet. It's an interesting question.
And while that, maybe Mr. Seven could give us a little more detail on what requirements would be for the signage in that area?
For the, the, this facade will be entitled to 10% of the building area in the, for a wall sign. So if that's a 1,000 square foot area, length, right, then they'd get a 100 square foot sign.
That side of the building?
On that side of the building, yes.
Looks like it's much bigger than 10%.
Well, that's not the sign, that's...
Take out the letter.
That's just a backup for the sign.
And who approves it? Is that the building department or?
The, the signage. Plan department. Specifically, Paul Evans reviews signs.
Mr. Tangle.
Ben, did you mention this was a medical office building?
The, the plans note a medical office use for the building, yes.
And the floor plan indicates a store?
Well, no, it's, can I ask you something? It's not just a medical building on a plaque for the, for disperment. It's a medical building or other, you know, office building, so it could be anything. It doesn't have to be necessarily medical. It could be whatever, it can be used for anything that is allowed by the, by the code.
I mean, what are we, what, in this only district?
Well, this, it's, it's, never know, so it allows a lot of, multiple different uses. When I, when I reviewed it, I reviewed it for medical because that's the highest parking requirement.
Okay.
So that's why I reviewed it under medical, and so they meet the medical office parking requirements. But the use itself, it could be an office use for any type of office-type uses. It could be a retail use if the retail use doesn't require more than 200 square feet, what parking space for 200 square feet. But, but I reviewed it more as a shell building with that particular use for parking reasons, Mr. Tangle.
So it parks for medical office, it parks for a lot of other uses?
Right, right.
Yeah, Mr. Senzey.
I don't, I can't find the landscaping details. Is there a landscaping plan for the site?
It's the one after the...
You can check it out. There you go. That's it. Can you zoom in on that?
Is that this one?
There you go.
So I, there doesn't seem to be much landscaping.
Well, there's basically three trees in the lot, which is what's required according to...
They make, they make landscaping requirements, Mr. Senzey. They, they do meet the landscaping requirements in terms of, they have the required landscaping for, they have the one tree for the, for the parking spaces, and they have two street trees, and then the site exceeds the 20%, 15% landscaping requirement.
There, there's not a lot of landscaping because there's not a lot of lot.
This is only a quarter acre lot, and the testing is very difficult to get it to work.
Mr. Tagle.
How, how are they handling the stormwater management?
Okay, I can explain that if you'd like. We have 650 linear feet of two-foot diameter pipe that's going to be buried underground, and there's another image of that.
Okay, thank you, I understand.
Which I think is superior to an open, you know, pool of water, you know, that attracts mosquitoes and what have you. It's much safer, nobody can fall into it, but it's underground.
Mr. Faison.
A question for you, Mr. Carla. Is there something unique about this building that causes them to not have a trash enclosure outside?
No, it's not, there's nothing unique.
You said it was uncommon, right, your comments?
There's no requirement that you have to have a dumpster. If you have to have a dumpster, it has to be screened, that's a requirement.
Okay.
In my six, seven years here working in Troy reviewing site plans, I can't think of another commercial building that has not had an outdoor dumpster. Mind you, it's only a 1,600 square foot building, so this is probably the smallest building I've ever reviewed, too, from a commercial standpoint. I, I only raise that concern because it was an unusual request, but there is no requirement that he has to have an outside dumpster.
Thank you. So it's the, the size of the building is probably the driving... So it's the size of the building is probably the driving?
Well, I don't know.
Pardon me? The question is, why no trash enclosure outside? Why you storing the trash?
Well, you know, there's a limited amount of space. I would run out of open space if I put a trash container out there that they normally, that you normally see, you know, the large container. And there's really no need for such a large container because it's just an office, an office doesn't, doesn't have that much trash. Just a couple of garbage cans in the back of the building is all, the trash is all required. Just a couple thirty gallon brown containers. And I talked to the people at Tringali, they said to be willing to pick it up and to have plenty of access to the site.
Thank you.
Mr. Edmonds.
If this building at some point becomes a medical office building?
Yes, sir.
How would you handle medical waste? I don't believe Tringali picks up medical waste. Have you looked into that?
No, I haven't. First of all, it's not configured as an office, it's a medical building right now, it's just an open space.
So you really don't intend this to be a medical building?
If I get a lease, you know, for a medical building, and then we'll look into the plans to make sure that everything is required and received. Right now, I have a, have a strong interest in the building from the people next door who want a bigger building, and they're just an investment company, okay?
Yes, Mr. Crank.
One quick thing, you know, we just saw a presentation of rather creative architecture, and this has got to be the most bland building I've ever seen. It's just, I'm being blunt, it just, there's nothing architectural about it that makes you think, oh wow, I'm so happy this is coming into the city. Is, have you given any thought to creating some architectural interest on this building?
Well, first of all, you know, the zoning requires that you do anything, any setbacks in the building, it's more than, I believe, thirty feet wide, okay? And this is only twenty-eight feet wide. And, you know, with that small of a building, I didn't want it to give it, you know, a personality that would only fit with certain businesses. I wanted a building that would anybody go in there and fit their business. So we tried to make it universal, universal, and so that's why, that's what the architect came up with, based on my input, of course. And, you know, I could have put like a big bell on there and-
No, 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 I just control those things. I'm just saying, if you look at other buildings that were just shown prior to your project, and those are somewhat universal, they're retail or various kinds, they only have tenants yet, just like you know, maybe. But they architecturally looked stunning to me.
I'm sure you don't like it.
We don't have, yes, we don't have an ordinance that says you have to meet certain aesthetic requirements, but I'm just saying, for your own rental ability to attract a higher end tenant, you might want to think about having a little higher end architecture.
Ms. Coos.
I want to revisit my understanding of the neighborhood node zoning law, zoning ordinance. In Ben's report, it says these nodes are intended to serve as commercial and mixed-use centers, serving as places to meet the basic needs of neighborhoods as well as the community as a whole. The neighborhood nodes require urban building forms. I'm struggling to look at this building and say, A, it's a commercial and mixed-use center that serves the neighborhood surrounding it in any way. I don't see at all how it's serving my community as a whole, and I'm not seeing an urban building form. I'm struggling to see how this meets the requirement of the neighborhood node ordinance. And so I need help. I'm saying it's, this isn't doing it. This is not what I've seen us talk about when we've looked at examples of what a neighborhood node is and what it looks like. This is nothing like what we discussed or use as examples in the master plan for this city.
Maybe we can bring up another image of the actual building. Right now, it's been changed from there. Notice the large windows on the side of the building there? Those are expanded quite a bit, plus we added a window in the back. It looks a little bit better, I think, than the three D picture that we just looked at. We did a lot of work with the brickwork. I don't know, if you take a real close look at the brickwork, there's a lot of detail in the brickwork.
Do you have samples of the brickwork?
Well, I got the brick, the color of the brick here, and I'm talking about the building. If you, if you look at the building again, you'll see that there's quite a bit of, if you look closely, there's a lot of detail in the brickwork that, it's not just a rectangular building, it's got some, some facets that come out of the building, but, you know, it's about one inch. It gives it more of a design feature.
Your west elevation indicates that that white space there is a metal siding? Can you-
Yeah, we got some stucco or something, and I understand that the council doesn't like that because it's not very weather resistant, and I heard one of these meetings that somebody suggested that metal would be more durable, it's more durable. So that's why we had to change to metal. It's supposed to represent like a stone, you know, so it's going to be the color of stone, it's going to be a dimpled finish, a dimpled surface, so it looks, kind of imitates stone, and you've seen it all over the place, they use it all over. It's supposed to represent like, you know, concrete or stone, but-
Do you have samples of that too?
Well, I've got the color of that, which is approximately what that color is. It's hard to obtain that, it's a little piece of that, you know. I think you've seen it all over town. It just, it looks like concrete when you rub to tap on it.
Are you talking about evas?
No, no, I'm talking about the metal, it's actually a metal siding, you know, which is, could have, it could have different decorations on it, too. It doesn't have to be just one piece, it could, it could represent brick or stone or, they make it all various different patterns, but we're planning on using just the, this is wet, smooth finish.
So does that elevation reflect the actual finish on top of the metal siding? Is that what you're saying, or is that?
That is the metal, that would be the metal siding, it's just a flat sheet of metal.
Flat sheet of metal. So there's no vertical panels, horizontal panels of any type of metal that actually-
Once you put the sign over the top of it, you know, that's, you know, that's what you would actually be looking at, you wouldn't really be looking at the background.
You'll see a lot of that material because you're only allowed ten percent of the building for a sign.
But that, that white space is not, isn't considered part of the sign, it's worth footage.
I understand that, that's what I'm saying, but this material is going to show anyway, even when you put the sign up there. If you're only allowed ten percent of the front of the building, that's a lot of that-
Yes, it would show, and that was part of the design intent, is to have that, instead of having it all brick, we wanted to make, give it some other material to, you know, to, you know, to make it a little bit easier to look at. You know, if it was all brick on the top, it would be monotonous, but at least with that, you know, it has a-
Thank you.
It's a design feature that we thought was looking good, and like I said, beauty's in the mind of the beholder, so we like it, we live with it, I guess. I do have one more thing if we're almost through here. I'd like to, that's for a, you know, there's a question about the photometrics study, you know, for the lamps around the building. Well, I was looking at zoning ordinances, Detroit zoning ordinance, and it says that if you've got less than twenty cars in your parking lot, which I have nine, and you're quite a distance from the neighbors behind you, which I'm over a hundred feet to my lot, to my, to my building line, it's a hundred feet, and there are another sixty feet beyond, behind the cement wall that's back there, I don't think that a small lamp illuminating the back door is going to interfere with the neighbors that are a hundred and sixty feet away, especially if it's a reasonable sized lamp, and I measured the luminosity at the base of the lamp. I don't think it's warranted for a this sized building, for the few lamps that I have on there, to do an expensive photometric study when all I have to do is just buy some low capacity lamps that aren't going to overpower anybody. It's, the whole intention is just to light the sidewalk so people don't trip themselves, you know, see where the, see where the doors are. To do this other study in this small building, with the neighbors so far away, it's not going to serve any useful purpose, so I think if you would please, you know, let me get by without doing that, it would save me a lot of money, and I don't think it will serve any good purpose to have that down.
Mr. Tegel.
Are you going to have any lighting in your parking lot?
No, no lighting in the parking lot.
I think you're going to need it, the building code will require you to.
What, lighting in the parking lot?
It's not the zoning ordinance, it's the building code, it's going to be your next step, but the fact is, you are going to need lighting in your parking lot.
Is that true, sir?
I'm not a building code official, sir, I wouldn't know. It would be part of the building code review.
I suggest you check with them first.
It's just a small parking lot and-
It's a safety thing, really. I mean, people getting out in the dark, whether it's slip and fall, or whether it's just from the safety of, you know, being accosted or whatever, but you do need lighting in your parking lot, and there are requirements for what foot candle level you need to have. But the other thing I'll share with you, if you go to a lighting manufacturer's rep, they'll give you the photometrics for free. You're not going to pay it, you say, look, I want to use your light fixtures, this is where my poles are going, these are the light fixtures I want to use, can you run me a photometric plan? They'll do it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
I've never heard of, until this point, I was never told that you needed lighting in the parking lot.
I'm not sure who you talked to.
Well, I was talking to the planning department.
It's not a requirement of zoning ordinance, is what I told, what I told-
It's a requirement of the building code.
So when do I have to meet this requirement?
You submit for building permits.
Okay, thank you.
Is this your first building that you've developed?
Well, actually, I've been a licensed builder for forty years, an ACNO machine licensed builder. I've been doing this as a hobby for all forty years. When I started, I built my first house right here in Troy, in the Song of London subdivision back in nineteen seventy-seven. And ever since, I've been working, it's more or less a hobby for me. My main discipline is electrical engineering, so, but this has always been my hobby, and I've always worked in this field to some degree. This is my first commercial building, that's why I don't know a lot of the rules. Presidential, much simpler.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Mr. Edmonds. I need to put the city attorney on this, but I'd like to ask her, do we have any discretion on this at all?
This is a site plan review, Mr. Edmonds, and as long as he meets the requirements of the, of the ordinance, so you have very little discretion.
Ms. Coos.
Can I go back to my comment that I'm not convinced that this meets the ordinance requirements? I, again, I'm not seeing commercial mixed-use center to meet the basic needs of the neighborhood or the community, I don't see the urban building form, which are predicated on buildings placed on the street and the incorporation of architectural details, most notably ground floor story act. I don't see it, I don't see where he meets the ordinance. And again, in prior conversations that we've had on the different zoning ordinances and reviewing the master plan and discussing neighborhood nodes, this is not anything that reflects any of those discussions or illustrations that we've reviewed.
Mr. Fring, do we have discretion to request an applicant to enhance a building architecturally under, under the neighborhood node that Ms. Coos just read, where it's somewhat subjective as to if this building is urban enough? Does that fall under the category of discretion?
Well, the problem I see is the neighborhood node is sort of an overall idea of the ordinance. It's not necessarily that this plan has to be, has to meet all of those requirements of the neighborhood node. It's the neighborhood node in general, all four corners on that intersection, section meets the neighborhood node, the purpose of the neighborhood node. So to answer your question with respect to design standards, I'll defer to Mr. Savinat and Mr. Carla, I'm not sure we, you have much discretion in design standards.
I guess if I, if I heard you correctly, the neighborhood node means the node as a whole, holistically, and not individual projects having to meet a certain architectural requirement, and then subsequent projects meeting the exact same stringent requirements, but the neighborhood node as a whole, there is some discretion flexibility in the design elements and the diversity of the buildings?
Right, because not one building is going to meet every single aspect of the neighborhood node, but the groupings-
Right.
-as a whole are supposed to meet the neighborhood node. What have we approved on that corner since that was zoned neighborhood node district? What have we approved?
I don't believe anything.
I don't, exactly. So, you know, we're sort of at the very beginnings of a neighborhood node decision here. I, I'm still gonna, I mean, it may be weak, but I'm still going to argue that we're not meeting neighborhood node requirement.
Can you provide some direction to the applicant? The applicant has met the zoning requirement in terms of building placement, met the requirements in terms of parking. The use is somewhat in flux, but the neighborhood node allows for multitude of uses. When we say commercial, we don't specifically mean just retail. Commercial from a zoning perspective also can mean office or other types of service uses, et cetera. It sounds like the biggest holdup is some of the architectural details. If I'm wrong, please, please let me know, but-
No, you're, you're-
So maybe, what might be more helpful is if we could provide some direction to the applicant about what specific architectural details, or simply say, we would like you to come back with some more, some different architectural details. I think that would be helpful for him moving forward, because the building itself, all the zoning requirements we're talking about have been met with where the building's placed to park requirements, those types of issues, et cetera.
Ms. Cooper.
We have other neighborhood nodes that we can provide to him as examples, do we not? Ones that have better architectural detail than this.
We've got, there's not, there hasn't been a lot of development in neighborhood nodes. As the applicant indicated, across the street was recently, actually, that was a conditional zoning, wasn't it?
Yes.
But the front is still neighborhood node, but that's not under construction yet. So the neighborhood node that's really seeing the most development is at the corner of Waddles, it crooks, which is a sound allowance, and a medical office building, that's, that's pretty well finished construction. Those are two examples.
The building has more architectural detail than this one, if I recall correctly.
It does.
Mr. Edson.
I think we're placing a very difficult burden on the applicant by suggesting that he step back and take a look at different architectural features for this node. I'm not aware that any node has any specific architectural features which are required. I think quite frankly, maybe we're disappointed with the design, it's a plain Jane, but it meets all the court requirements, and I don't think we would turn it down.
I think, just to add on to your comment, you know, as opposed to what we saw in the previous project that was brought before us tonight, that was Form Base Code, and the requirements of Form Base Code are more stringent, as I understand.
This is requirements, this has to meet Form Base Code.
Form, so Form Base Code as neighborhood node?
Yes.
Okay. Different requirements than the previous project.
Slightly different requirements for Big B versus neighborhood node, but they're, but the volumes are pretty similar.
Well, let me suggest then that it gives a little help to the applicant and steer him to those particulars in the Form Base Code that he should pay attention to, if in fact that seems to be a hangup. But you know, if somebody wants to build a plain Jane building- But you know, if somebody wants to build a plain Jane building, so what? I think he's got it right.
Are there some requirements we can point the applicant to? I mean, I think, I think every building, every applicant that comes in front of us, there's an opportunity here to do something. And Mr. Hudson, with all due respect, I don't agree with you.
I never do agree with you.
You know, again, I think there can be a lot that can be done to this, to this building. I know it's a small building. I know it's going to have to be done cost effectively, but I think with different materials, possibly, just some different shapes with the materials and stuff, I think it could be enhanced to be a much more attractive building and actually a much more saleable building, releasable building for you as the landlord. So if there are requirements that we can point to and say, share these with your architect and have him take notes and pencil.
Yeah, I would call, I would default back to the design requirements in the Form Base, you know, neighborhood node Form Base requirements. And that's kind of the direction I would provide to the applicant moving forward. And we, Mr. Savanat and I can provide other examples of smaller buildings in Troy that some of these architectural details or some of the projects out of Crooks and Waddles, some of those, what those have done to kind of give them some examples.
And the one across the street, I know it's still under construction, but maybe give him images of what that is going to look like, that way he can...
That's residential.
But at least it looks like a neighborhood node. It doesn't fit in with the residential going in across the street. It does not. It does not fit at all. I would want to be in the residence across the street and have this, have a look at this one I'm driving into my neighborhood. Me either.
I think the challenge...
Across the street at the gas station or pizza store. It's a gas station.
I think the challenge of the neighborhood node is that to not, to get a project and say, you know, this neighborhood, to not make a neighborhood node a cookie cutter of the next neighborhood node, and the challenge is, like Ms. Dufrain said, that the actual Form Base Code allows that flexibility in the variety of the buildings and the architectural design of the buildings, where not every single building has to have a specific look, but holistically, that neighborhood node should lend itself to what the ordinance's requirements are or what the neighborhood calls for in that note.
One thing I've learned, sitting at this table for about three years now, is that Mr. Tagle always has suggestions on how they can do things creatively without spending a lot of money and do it cost effectively, and I think that that's something that this is not.
Yes, Mr. Savanat.
All right. So it sounds like the focus of the planning commission, the concern with this project is really focused on architecture. We've all kind of got concurrence on that. I've heard some concern with, there's an area shown on here for signage that seems to significantly exceed the 10% signage for that side of the building. I've heard comments related to it's somewhat a plain building, the palette of materials is pretty thin. We, for the last number of months, have provided questions to the applicant and asking them to bring their architect and present the building, talk about the context and the motivation and some of these architectural, some of these architectural concepts. We provided those questions to the applicant, the architect was not able to attend the meeting this evening. So what I'm suggesting may be a good idea is explain, I think the petitioner's taking good mental notes here in terms of some of our challenges and our suggestions, and provide the petitioner with an opportunity to come back to a meeting with his architect, blank slate, start over again on the focus on the architecture of the building, present the design, perhaps modified, enhanced, changed, with some tweaks as suggested by Mr. Tagle, and take another shot at it.
I mean, I think also they should improve the landscaping, very minimal landscaping on the site. Even what may meet the requirements is just a very minimal site, and also the lighting plan. If they're going to provide lighting on the site, they should show where the lighting plates are going to be proposed on the building and the parking lot. So there's a lot of detail that could be added to a site.
Sure.
One of the, he's going to purchase lighting from a lighting contractor. Besides providing photometrics, they provide cut sheet details that show what these are going to look like, and perhaps, that's one element of the architecture that perhaps could be used to enhance the building is the lighting fixtures.
Sure. It sounds like we'd like to give the applicant an opportunity to come back with the architect and present this project again with any additional improvements or any additional changes that the architect might want to implement for enhancing the elevations in the site in terms of lighting and landscape? Is that, is that a...
You know, if I met all the requirements for the building, you know, like I said, I like to build it, okay? An architect likes to build it. And, you know, this is my project, I'm spending my money to build this thing, and I meet all the requirements. Why do I have to design a building to meet your needs? I don't, I really don't understand. This project's been in the design stage for one year. One year. I started to design, I came into the department one year ago, and I talked to the people in the department, in the planning department, and we started doing sketches, and I brought my sketches, and I've been doing this for a year, taking it back to the architect, they wanted changes, and I came back in with the changes. The parking lot wasn't right, I came back with a different parking lot. It's been a year. Could you please give me a break and just let me go with it? It's not, it's not ugly ducking it, it's just a standard building. I don't know, I don't know if you can quit on this project because, yes, it's taking too long, it's taking too much money, it's taking forever to build it, but...
Mr. Tagle.
I have just a question. I was noticing that the gentleman that sealed these drawings is an engineer. Do you have an architect, a licensed architect working on this, or is it an engineer that did this for you?
There's, there's an architect, it's a licensed architectural firm, it's a Martini, Martinez, it's, he's been in business forever.
Okay, well, I just noticed that it's an engineer that sealed the drawings, and I was just wondering, is it the engineer that designed this?
Are you looking at site plan?
No, I'm looking at your building elevations and floor plan sheet. A gentleman named Robert Allen.
I'm dealing with a reputable firm that's been in business a long time, I don't understand if that's a book or stamp or not.
I don't, it was just a question. It has nothing to do with our discussion, I was just curious.
Well, I don't, sir, I didn't even pay attention. I figured the stamp, I figured was the right stamp.
Well, really, the reason I was asking, there's a big difference between an engineer designing a building and an architect designing a building. Engineers...
He personally designed this building, sir?
I have no idea.
Grass, grassmen, grass women, people that sit behind a desk and they draw the building up, and they take it back to the architect and they say, "Okay, you did it right, you did it wrong." Come on, this is the way it works, architects don't sit down and draw buildings. It's the designer that gets paid $20 an hour.
With all due respect, you are talking to a licensed architect.
Yeah.
Sorry?
He's a licensed architect.
Oh, so, excuse me.
Well, you should.
I, but no.
Maybe he runs their office differently than I run my office, I don't know.
I don't know if that's true or not, but I know this firm, they also have these...
I'll address you later. All right.
Mr. Savanat.
I just want to state, I'm not trying to be adversarial, but a statement was made that this has taken a year, and I just want to state for the record, there's an inference that we've been dragging our feet for a year.
No, sir, that's not...
Can I, please? This application was submitted November 9th, 2017, just for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Savanat?
If I may, it is, you know, it's early in the year, and I think we can have time to get back to allowing you to build your building at a reasonable time, the spring. And I'd like to propose that for a site plan approval, of course, under our plate, a zoning ordinance is requested for the proposed office building located on the east side of the square lake road, 5956 Lirinoi. Section 21 of the NN neighborhood node Q, district being postponed for the following reasons. The applicant will provide additional information for the landscaping plan, his architecture, his lighting details, and then also the other suggestions that the planning commission has proposed.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Cruz. Please.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crep?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Ms. Japidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Motion passes. The project is postponed for the applicant to return more information from the architect and, as mentioned in the resolution. Moving on to item number seven on the agenda for tonight, election of officers. And according to the bylaws, we are to elect officers at the first meeting in January of every year, and the process by which we do it is open up the floor for nominations for each office, starting with the office of ZBA representative, and then the office of vice chair, and then chairman. Mr. Savanat, did you want to say anything before we...
No, no, and Julie Frain's probably more knowledgeable about bylaws than I am, she's available to answer any questions as well.
Sure. Mr. Frain, did you want to comment anything before we move into...
No, no, no. Other than Ms. Blumer, and I spoke earlier, and she did not want it to be done as a slate, but you already said you were going to do it individually, so that's fine.
So that was her request not to do it as a slate?
Correct. Do each individual.
Do each individual. We will do that. So at this time, I just want to open up the floor for any nominations for the ZBA representatives, represented from the planning commission to the zoning board of appeal. Do we have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Hudson.
I sense there's a dearth of interest in ZBA representatives, and I will volunteer if no one else will.
We are taking you to the bar.
Let's vote right now.
Stay on until someone succeeds it, succeeds her.
I would say, though, that it's actually very interesting, even though I didn't want to commit to doing it again, I don't know if you remember, but this is the one place where you can go that you kind of have authority higher than...
Stop with them.
The ZBA has been out of the...
I suggest that people who are not on ZBA get the experience. I've said this time and again, that I had great experience, and as a chair of the planning commissioner, vice chair, it would be very valuable for someone to get that, and even if you have not been on it and you're just a planning commissioner, I learned a lot this year, and I really recommend anyone who hasn't served in that role, it's one additional meeting a month, it's not earth chattering on your time, but I think the learning that you get from attending is invaluable, and I know that you're willing to volunteer, but I'm just...
I'll just decide if anybody else after that will like to do it.
Is there anyone?
Can I just ask, who has not served on the ZBA?
Sure.
Uh-oh.
I believe you could be in two positions. You could be the vice chair.
Definitely.
Or chairman, and the...
We have Mr. Hudson that has volunteered. I guess the process is, the floor is still open for nominations, if somebody wants to make any other nomination, I guess we're really...
Yes, I'll nominate.
I thought I read this crowd great.
I'll nominate Mr. Apahedin. I think the chair should have had the experience of being, serving on the ZBA.
Any other nominations for ZBA?
Well, would he have to accept a nomination before you...
We have to vote on each one of them.
Well, he would have to accept it, I think, before you...
No, it's not required, you can just have one nomination.
What if he looked at you and said, "I decline"?
There's one nomination and one volunteer.
Keep in mind, this is, this gets, city council confirms the appointment, so they could possibly...
It's a recommendation.
They could possibly...
They won't.
So, keep that in mind.
So do we vote on the volunteer first or the nomination first? Is that...
Somebody has a nominee, let's get it over with.
So you decline, why don't you just decline?
I can.
He can decline it.
I can decline it?
He can or can't?
He can.
So if I decline it, then we still vote on the volunteer, on Mr. Hudson volunteering? Is that correct?
Yes.
Without being nominated?
He was not.
Not nominated, no.
Not even himself.
Why would I nominate Mr. Hudson?
He already did.
Okay. So I decline in Mr. Hudson's favor for...
Very gracious of you.
If there are no more nominations, then I guess I will close the floor to nominations and we'll move to the vote.
Actually, I would say, how many years, how many years have you served on the ZBA?
Ten.
Ten?
Ten years, yes.
Then I think...
And chair.
As chair of ZBA.
Were you not a planning commissioner?
No. I graduated to this group now. Congratulations.
So I will do this, I will nominate myself, because I think the newer members of the planning commission, all of us should, I feel very strongly that all of us should get more experience with the ZBA. I was stepping down with the hope that someone who has not served on the ZBA would step up, but I would be more than happy to learn a little bit more. If I'm going to do a good job here, I think it's really important that I serve on the ZBA for another year, rather than you sort of do it for 10 years and then do it one more year. I think I'll gain more from being there.
I graciously accept that declination.
Thank you for doing that, brother.
But I, like I said, I learned a lot in the one year. It's not another commitment that I wanted, given my, what's on my plate, but because I know the least about it, other than those who have never served, and I would rather take that opportunity. I see it as an opportunity to be on the ZBA. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And... And just to maybe clarify, so the people that haven't served, is it Mr. Tagle, myself, Mr. Apahedin, is that what we said?
It's Cruz.
It's Cruz, okay.
And I know that they have...
I'm curious.
They also have a dearth of women on there.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I don't think they had one in Mr. Evans' history until I...
Yeah, there was one.
Just me for a while, as a representative.
And council, and...
Pennington?
No. Pennington, his sister was on planning commission, and she served as the alternate to the ZBA. By now, she only won.
Was she an attorney?
No.
No, she's a builder, Cindy Pennington.
Oh, Cindy, okay.
Okay, so we have one nomination on the floor, any other nominations? If not, we will close the nominations and, Ms. Arniki, we will take roll call.
Mr. Crep?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Japidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes, and thank you.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Cooper, for stepping up again. There's always one more year.
When I do.
This is her ZBA representative. We will move on to vice chair, opening up the floor for nominations for vice chair. Mr. Senz.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Faison, vice chair.
We have one nomination for Mr. Faison. Any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing no other nominations, we will close the floor and take roll call for nomination for the office of vice chair. Ms. Arniki, roll call, please.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Japidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Crep?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Faison, vice chair, for one more year. Opening up the floor for nominations for, for chair. Opening up the floor for nominations for Chair. Mr. Sensi.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Faison as Chair.
One nomination on the floor. Any other nominations for Chair?
He's done a great job and the command of the hard work he's done the last year and looking forward to another good year. As the Planning Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Sensi. No more nominations for Chair. I will close the nominations for Chair and people will call Ms. Sarniki, please.
Mr. Zanzika?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Aviadian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Mr. Edmonds?
Yes.
Mr. Faison?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacre?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you so much for your trust in me for one more year with the chairmanship position, and I look forward to another great year, great project. Moving on to item number eight on the agenda, 2017 Planning Commission Annual Report. Mr. Savanat?
Yes, it's a requirement of the. It's statute, I'm trying to think which is planning or zoning. It's the. Planning Enabling Act. Yeah. Where the Planning Commission is to prepare a report of their activities over the past year. We've been doing this for almost 10 years now, and I think it's really interesting and helpful to look back over the year and realize how busy you were. And sometimes you think that you're spinning your wheels and you're not accomplishing much, but then you put a list together and you realize that you really did a lot. So provided, just to you, as required, but also for your information, and it was also provided to the City Council. It was a good, it was a good year. I can answer any question, I'm not going to go over all these. I mean, are you aware of any that have been set aside or put on hold? A project certain? Of these ones? Yeah. Yeah, some of them, some of them were postponed, like on the first page, Bethesda Romanian Pentecost Church. Remember, we've met a couple times with them. Well, yeah. Yeah, that just. The ones who were approved that were. Oh, that are kind of on hold? Yeah, the. What about the PNC? That's when I was. ALAF, I think that was approved in 2016. Oh. Yeah. They have to be on hold. Yeah, they had, they've got problems with their, they were leased, they were.
Problems with getting the leases from the parking area for that tower.
Oh.
PNC tower, so probably that, it looks like that project's going to go away.
Oh, it's too bad.
Yeah, that area.
Yeah. They're looking for other spots.
In fact.
And we've talked, we've, yeah, we've talked about if it, if it does go south, they'd be open to vertical mixed use with some element on the first floor of the hotel above, it's that type of thing. So we're trying to make lemonade out of lemons.
Brian, if it were to go south, they would have to come back and reapply and then be under the special use?
Yes.
Brett, do you know anything about the Midtown Place Apartments, the one at Maple and Liverry, 400-plus units? Is that, I mean, that just is on hold or what's the status of that? There was so much excitement of that.
Yeah, they, they were having timing issues with the turnover of the back portion of the property. So they were, they're looking at starting soon, but they're going to have to phase it and start at the front first and then work back. But it's, they're planning on moving forward.
Moving.
They're moving forward.
Okay. They're spending some engineering plans recently, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Edmonds?
Since my question is related to this topic in terms of how long a developer can take to complete a project, is there, is there any limit on the time?
To complete a project?
To complete it. Once, once they've got, you know, they're under construction, how can they go on forever?
Like Amber?
I guess.
So I'm not an expert on, I'm not the building official, I'm not an expert on the building code, but my understanding, and perhaps Mr. Tagle can jump in, is, is once, once a building permit is pulled and construction starts and is consistent with the building permit and you continue to make progress on it, that's enough, I believe, to keep you, to keep you.
Keep it open?
Keep it, keeping it open. And you've always got that developer who does the minimal to keep it open. We just happen to have one down the street here, unfortunately.
And in the meantime, another project that was approved of that developer, is that on hold also? He cannot do anything there?
No, I think he started, I think he started a foundation over there. I know he's not underground.
Well, I thought the, I thought the City Council said that he couldn't start another project until it finishes.
I, I don't think that was an actual, that was actual act, action by council. I think it was more of a, some comments made.
Well.
Informal.
I, I hope at some point we can, as a city, we can address those kinds of concerns. I think it's just.
If I may jump in, the, I can't speak necessarily to the building code officials and a regular, you know, site plan, but with a special like Amber, for example, there is a conditional rezoning in place, and there are provisions in that agreement that talk about substantial compliance and I think the decision was, I think it was discussed at some point that he has met the minimum requirements. I mean, yes, we'd all like to see him move a little faster, but in the conditional rezoning, there are requirements that he has to adhere for. And Lori and I, Lori and I have talked about tightening that language a little bit in future conditional rezonings, make it a little bit more difficult for them to get away with things like.
Who would have approved that, the City Council?
The conditional rezoning? Those are case, those are case by case, so those agreements are leaked.
But if you made a policy change?
Well, that's a good question. I mean, Lori and I would draft language that would ultimately be reviewed by Planning Department, by, by council, you know. It's not really a policy change, it's just tightening the language and what the cities, what steps the city would need to take to enforce the agreement to get him to move quicker. Right now, he's at the base, he's at the base level of what would be required. So we have had that discussion because we've had more, we seem to be having more conditional rezonings. So Lori and I have talked about tightening that language.
Any other comments on the site plan reviews for 2017?
How does this compare with 2016?
Good question. Let's go.
He's ready for that one. So.
You all want to ask the same thing, Julie?
When I was compiling the list, I, I used, I cheated and used the 2016 tables and deleted all, like to construct it. And there was more, there was more rows in 2017 than there were in 2016. I'd add some rows. So based on that very scientific study, we think we were busier.
Okay.
I think you're getting this, Brian. I think what you know about 2017 is different than 2016, as we've seen in cluster developments if we hadn't seen before. I think three or four have been approved. So I think that's a big feather in our cap.
Are there any new ones coming online for 2018 that?
There's a couple that were in the review process that we've sent back because of various issues. Mostly the parallel plans aren't right. So.
Planning Commission knows that Council approved Davis last night.
I just want, I have to say that.
I'm sorry.
Davis Cyclondo, the one along Lake, was approved last night by City Council.
Six to one.
After an hour and a half of discussion.
What were, did you want to elaborate a little bit on what were the sticky, sticky points on that?
The compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, there's some, many residents felt that there was too many units as related to the surrounding three sides, and there was concern regarding the bioswell and the design and maintenance and potential for flooding of those bioswells. But as it was explained, something that's, a preliminary site plan has preliminary engineering and preliminary design, it's not engineered. The details were worked out prior to engineering, and those will be some things we look at to make sure, to ensure that we still have best management practices on the site that meet the spirit of what was approved, but perhaps don't have the maintenance requirements and the potential impact on the neighbors.
Ms. Edmonds?
By the way, Brett and Steve Van Depp did a really outstanding job. I watched that meeting very carefully. The thing that was new to me, that I didn't think we had, was the fact that there would be an underground storm drain, a flexible storm drain, running all the way around all these properties, and that should be a rear yard storm drain, rear yard storm drain. That wasn't before us, I don't believe.
Well, what was confusing, and I'm not trying to play an engineer, I'm not an engineer, but what was confusing is I think the neighbors believed that there was going to be significant actual stormwater storage in the bioswells, where there's, there is a detention basin that's proposed. So that's going to take most of the storage and potentially all the storage. The bioswells are a best management practice, they are to cool the water and clean the water, and then have, the, the underdrain was kind of a, a just in case, in case there's a very, very heavy rain event, that could capture that, that spill over water and not negatively impact the neighbors.
So that's going to be part of the, the plan that was approved by?
They're going to come up with something that's consistent with the Planning Commission recommended approval.
Do you know of the cluster developments that we've approved so far, how many of them are going to be completed by, within the next six months?
Within the next six months?
The Parkview or the Park on Beach?
Parkview on Beach, I would guess it has a chance to be built out by the end, by the end of this.
Pretty far along construction.
Yeah.
And they might be done in it. Because one of the things is, as they come up, if we could direct residents to an existing cluster development to see how it fits in, so that there's not as much objection around it, that way they have something living, breathing to look at in the community. Because I think that that's one of our challenges, is that people can't picture it. They don't understand how it's going to fit. I know, it's easier for me, like I drove by where that building would have gone, and I said it won't fit, and I don't know why I feel that way, but it helps to be able to visualize. I think Mr. Edmonds is one of, just going there and seeing things before we look at, and I think Ali's done it as well, where he's driven by some of our developments. I think it just really helps for residents when they raise objections to a cluster. We can't stop people developing. Somehow, the idea of the cluster to me was that we were saving some of our green space, saving some of our trees by, by having that option. And I don't think the community understands it. They just see it as not in my backyard. And somehow, we need to educate our neighbors on.
That's a, that's a good idea to suggest that to the neighbors. The challenging aspect of that is, for example, the, the beach cluster was built in an R1A. So when you get an R1A, you get a little bit more open space, a little bit more, a little bit higher setbacks versus the cluster on Long Lake, that I think it was an R1C. So when you get an R1C and you get the neighbors from an R1C and you send them over to the R1A, it might not be exactly apples to apples. They might expect more open space when they're actually not getting it. That's the challenge of doing that and sending them. But, and then giving them a site plan, again, they're not really comparing apples to apples. But, but the education is important here as well to understand that.
Rain Tree Park will probably be built out this year, or at least started this year for sure, and Davis, as we got through last night, will probably also be, so we're starting getting more of them coming online at least laid out this year.
Is the other school district property, the one that was just recently sold, Section 11, I believe it is, 10 acres or something?
Submitted, but there was an issue with the parallel plan. So Ray Tree Village on the park, construction on the site has already started, so I would anticipate that homes would start construction this, this construction year.
Thank you.
Just a question, do you recall, I know it's been discussed here before, do you recall when the Detroit City Center or the, you know, Crooks and Baby project will be completely built out and done?
This project?
Not, not, not that building, everything, the apartment building.
It is. They're very, they're being very aggressive and I.
Oh, I thought they called Detroit City Center, I thought it was called Troy City Center here, maybe I got it wrong.
That's, that's what they call it.
That's a provision name.
Yeah, that's what, that's what.
Yeah, no, no, I can understand the intention now.
Get that in my brain. They've been very aggressive and, and like I said, the, the two restaurants will be forced. I would anticipate.
Well, the structure will be done this year. You know, I expect the two restaurants that will be coming back, I believe the next Planning Commission will be done this year. I expect this retail building will probably be done this year. I think the apartment building might be the only thing that might be lagging into next year.
And the deck this year looks like, that's going up, right?
That's going up right now.
Right.
And your house in season 52?
Are coming back.
Yeah, they're going back, I believe they'll be coming back at the next Planning Commission meeting for approval, so if that, assuming they get approved in the next meeting, I expect it will be under construction this spring.
They've dramatically improved the elevations for the season 52.
I do want to say, I was in King of Prussia, I almost sent everybody pictures, but I didn't know if I could do that. But I saw a yard house and a season 52, and I was really impressed. Even though we found the coloring of seasons 52 wouldn't be so great, it was a kind of sunny day in, in King of Prussia, it's one of the biggest malls, and it was, it was really nice. It looked really nice, both of them, so.
Okay, I guess we can just move to item number nine on the agenda, public comment for items on the current agenda. Anyone else in the audience that we should speak to? Anything on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, we'll move to Planning Commission comments, item number 10 on the agenda. Start with Mr. Faison tonight.
Thanks for everyone's support for Vice Chairman. That's all I have.
Mr. Tagle?
Nope, nothing for me, thanks.
Several things. First of all, I want to remind everyone, we have Civic Center conversations coming up. There's one on Saturday from 11 to 1:00. I think at the library, there's another one, but this one is, so there's two, so please check your calendars, I think it's really important. And then I just want to say, I am going to be subjecting you to a capstone presentation, probably next month. And so be prepared, come with. Popcorn, no kidding.
Ms. Jacre, Mrs. Zanzika?
I was just curious, I noticed Papavinos, the old Papavinos that is being redeveloped. Do you have any idea what's going on there? Oh, it's, it's like a sports pub, I forget the name of it. Yeah, they're.
Papavinos.
At, at, at Midtown Square. My home depot and. Yeah, they're ones.
I like Papavinos.
How about Cruz Amiri, anything new on that? No.
Did Papavinos, did they resolve the patio issue?
You'll have to talk to Lori about that. I think they did.
That's all I have, thank you.
Yeah, with repurposing like that one, where it's not a form-based district, in fact, it's a consent judgment, and they're allowed to just swap out one restaurant for the other one, I really don't get it, to get that involved.
Yeah, Ms. Hudson?
Yeah, thanks.
Ms. Arneke?
Thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
So my comments tonight are, I brought this up at one of the other meetings and it was shortly after the Civic Center one that I attended with Planning Council about the importance of what you've mentioned tonight, public education. I would like to suggest that as we move into 2018 and we move forward, that we make an effort to do some public education. And I mean specifically with some of these public hearings that we have in making sure that the audience understands in layman's terms, not legalese, but in layman's terms, the law that we're adhering to as we're making decisions. Again, I think that so many of our audience members leave a hearing and they feel like they've not been heard. That they've come to us and expressed how they feel and we disregard it and they just don't understand why they didn't get what they want. And so I think it's incumbent upon us to do that education piece. And then the other thing that I would suggest, I would like to see us as a commission focus on, and I'm going to say it, design standards that, you know, we take a look at our ordinances that are going to help us in situations like tonight where we've got a plain Jane building that no one's really excited about so that we have something to fall back on. There's been talk about it. So I know, you know, that we're interested, but we need to make it a focus, right? We can't let our busyness with the site plan applications let us, you know, let that fall to the bottom of the priority list. We need to stay on top of that. It's important as we move forward and run into less and less and less space as we make decisions. So, and congratulations to both of you, Carlton and Ali. I wish you well in 2018. Looking forward to it.
So just to
Nobody wished me congratulations.
We're just so excited, thrilled.
We're picking the phone. Y'all everybody.
So just to piggyback on Ms. Cruz's comments, last night at the city council meeting, I watched the meeting. Given the pushback of the neighbors for the cluster development, I went back to square one and walked them through the actual process for review and approval of cluster developments, explain where we are and explaining, because it is confusing, where preliminary site plan review sits in the whole, within the whole process. It's step one of four. And although it's shown on a plan and it's a drawing that shows bioswells, they're not engineered yet. And there's, you know, I walked them through that and I didn't have notes with me. I just went off the PowerPoint and spoke. Tried to speak in an engaging way to, to try to get people up to speed on where they were. So I agree with you. So we're also, we had some discussion today about creating a series of three or four, three-minute videos, Development 101 videos to put online to talk about development and planning and zoning and site plan review and these types of things. So we're working, we're working on that. I agree. I think, I think there's some room for, you know, if I can free my schedule up a little bit, I'll commit to trying to do it. Maybe do a talk at the library about open space or development, you know, in an engaging, informative way. There's different ways to educate. I think we need to, need to keep working on that. Design standards during, during the discussion this evening, and I don't want to really get into that. But Ben and I both turned to each other and said, man, we got to get going on these design standards. So Ms. Cruz is absolutely correct. This needs to go, this needs to be given a higher priority and we will give it a higher priority. You'll be seeing something from us on design standards in the very near future.
Just a question. So Karen, what, the education you were talking about, so you're talking about education that's broad, available.
Well, yeah.
It extends from the same place.
It does. It does. Yeah, and it, and it so instead of just jumping into the, for, for, for applications that maybe are controversial or it's a project we don't see a lot of, perhaps instead of jumping right into, you know, it meets the side yards, jumping into the technicalities, maybe we just take a step back and provide some context and provide some
At the meeting.
At the meeting.
I agree. That's, that's what I'm trying to clarify. To frame it so people understand what the criteria is and what we're improving.
Right, and I agree.
When you have a public hearing and you're looking at something like what we looked at tonight that is by right, right, I mean, all the ordinance requirements, this is by right. I don't think that, that many people understand that that means you have no discretion. That, so everything that they say, really, at the end of the day, if it meets all the ordinance requirements, you can dislike it all you want. You can worry about your property values. You can worry about your safety in the streets and the kids and all the reasons that we hear why people don't like a project. And, you know, you can come in droves. You can come in droves and it doesn't matter.
Right. No, I understand.
It's by right.
I understand.
Doesn't matter, by law. And people don't understand that and they don't like that. And I get it.
Their point is they feel that
And then they feel like they're looking at us and they're like, well, what good are you people? Why, why are you even planning commissioners? Did you not hear what I said? Oh, yeah, we heard what you said. But this is what the law says. And it's a rock and a hard spot.